Amina Trente Sette, Nala Jesus Turin Guahan is back in session. Welcome back colleagues. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that we act on the voting file.
There's a motion not withstanding the rules to act on the consideration of the daily file. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We will take a two-minute recess to distribute the files. (pause) Uh-oh. Where are those guys in the back? Where are those two? Amina Trente Sette, Nala Jesus Turin Guahan is back from recess. The folders have been distributed. Is there any objection to proceeding now or do you need more time? Okay. So, we're on the consideration of the daily file. We'll begin with the third reading file. And the first bill is Bill Number 42-37COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 42-37COR, as amended by the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Chris Barnett, Telotie Tadegui, Joe S. Augustine, Amanda L. Shelton, Christopher M. Duñez, Jesse A. Luhan, Dwayne T. De Suniculus, Thomas J. Fisher, William A. Parkinson, Roy A. B. Canata, Frank Blas Jr., Therese M. Terlahi, Joanne Brown, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Sabina Flores Perez. An Act to Add New Sections 7117 and 7117.1 to Chapter 7 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated relative to requiring the availability of automated external defibrillators at all school campuses of the Guam Department of Education by June 30, 2024.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Suniculus. Senator Suniculus, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Bill Number 42-37COR received 15 ayes and is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 44-37COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 44-37COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Chris Barnett, Sabina Flores Perez, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Therese M. Terlahi, William A. Parkinson, Joe S. Augustine, Roy A. B. Canata, Dwayne T. De Suniculus, Christopher M. Duñez, Amanda L. Shelton, Joanne Brown, Frank Blas Jr., Jesse A. Luhan. An Act to Add New Sections 7112D and 7112.2 to Chapter 17 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated relative to creating the Safe School Facilities Act of 2023.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, pass. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, pass. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Suniculus. Senator Suniculus, pass. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator Suniculus. Senator Suniculus, aye.
Bill Number 44-37COR, as amended on the floor, received 15 ayes and is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 20-37COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 20-37COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by William A. Parkinson, Therese M. Terlahi, Roy A. B. Canata, Dwayne T. De Suniculus, Chris Barnett, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Joe S. Augustine, Amanda L. Shelton. An Act to Amend Sections 2103 and 2104 of Article 1 and Sections 2701, 2702, 2703, and 2705 of Article 7, and to add a new subsection D to Section 2201 of Article 2, and a new section 2706 to Article 7, all of Chapter 2, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to restoring access to federal public assistance for otherwise eligible individuals with felony drug convictions.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Suniculus. Senator Suniculus, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Bill Number 20-37COR received 15 ayes and is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 62-37COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 62-37COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Chris Barnett, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Christopher M. Duñez, Telotie Tadegui, Thomas J. Fisher, Dwayne T. De Suniculus, Sabina Flores Perez, Amanda L. Shelton, Joe S. Augustine, Roy A. B. Canata, Frank Blas Jr., Jesse A. Luhan. An Act to Amend Sections 12104, 12106, and 12108B, and to repeal Sections 12107R and T. of Chapter 12, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the process for charter school petitions.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown.
Senator Brown.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to request the body to recuse me of voting on this bill. I have a child that attends a school that may participate or benefit from this legislation, so I request not to vote on it.
This has been a request not to vote on the bill. It's subject to the body's consent. All those in favor of allowing her not to vote on the bill, please raise your hand.
Excuse me, Madam Speaker. What was the reason for the refusal?
Senator Brown, would you please restate the reason?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a child that is attending a school that may benefit from this legislation, so I'm requesting of the body not to vote on this bill.
I think they can't hear you, Senator Brown, sorry.
I'm sorry.
It is something like the air con's very loud. Yeah. If you could just say it again louder, please.
I'm requesting not to vote on this bill because I have a child that's attending a school that may benefit from this legislation, so that is my reason for asking the body's consideration for me not to vote on this bill, to recuse me from voting. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of allowing the senator to be recused from voting, please raise your hand. To be recused from voting. Motion passes. Clerks, did you get that vote, clerks?
Senator Brown excused. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Suniculus. Senator Suniculus, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Bill Number 62-37COR received 14 ayes and one excused. Bill Number 62-37COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 73-37LS, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 73-37LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Therese M. Terlahi, Chris Barnett, Telotie Tadegui, Joanne Brown. An Act to Add New Sections 16115, 16116, 16117, 16118, 16119, and 16120 to Chapter 16, Division 1, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to further expanding access to opioid antagonists by establishing an emergency opioid access bystander program and requiring co-prescription of opioid antagonists.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Suniculus. Senator Suniculus, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye.
Bill Number 73-37LS received 15 ayes and is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 82-37LS, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 82-37LS, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, and Statistics, Research, and Planning, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Dwayne T. De Suniculus, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Christopher M. Duñez, William A. Parkinson, Jesse A. Luhan, Joe S. Augustine, Roy A. B. Canata, Telotie Tadegui, Thomas J. Fisher, Joanne Brown, Chris Barnett, Frank Blas Jr., Sabina Flores Perez, Amanda L. Shelton, Therese M. Terlahi. An Act to Amend Sections 7102.2, 7120.5, 7160E, and 7161F of Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to allowing Republic of Korea veterans and distinguished flying cross recipients to qualify for Guam Veteran License plates and to allow more documents to be used for veteran qualifications.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Suniculus. Senator Suniculus, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Bill Number 82-37LS received 15 ayes and is duly passed by this body. Congratulations. Bill Number 94-37COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 94-37COR, as amended by the Committee on Infrastructure, Economic Development, San Francisco High School, Disability Services, Self-Determination, and Historic Preservation, Housing Public Accountability, and the Guam Buildout, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Roy A. B. Canata, Joe S. Augustine, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Chris Barnett, Sabina Flores Perez, Amanda L. Shelton, Dwayne T. De Suniculus, William A. Parkinson, Thomas J. Fisher, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, Christopher M. Duñez, Jesse A. Luhan, Telotie Tadegui, Therese M. Terlahi. An Act to Repel and Reenact Chapter 58D of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Macau Act of 2013.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Suniculus. Senator Suniculus, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, nay.
Bill Number 94-37COR received 14 ayes and one nay. Bill Number 94-37COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 101-37COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 101-37COR, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, and Statistics, Research, and Planning, and substituted and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Sabina Flores Perez, Telotie Tadegui, Chris Barnett, Joanne Brown, Frank Blas Jr., Thomas J. Fisher, Christopher M. Duñez, Jesse A. Luhan, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, William A. Parkinson, Roy A. B. Canata, Joe S. Augustine, Dwayne T. De Suniculus, Amanda L. Shelton, Therese M. Terlahi. An Act to Repel and Reenact Section 1310 of Article 3, Chapter 1, Title 22, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to adopting updated emission standards for sulfur oxides from fuel combustions to ensure the island of Guam meets the national ambient air quality standards for sulfur dioxide by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhan. Senator Luhan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator S. Augustine. Senator S. Augustine, aye. Senator Suniculus. Senator Suniculus, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass.
Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass, nay. Substitute bill number one oh one dash thirty-seven C O R received fourteen ayes, one nay, and is duly passed by this body. We've concluded with the third reading file. We are now on the voting file. On the nomination of the Honorable Elizabeth Barrett Anderson to serve as a member of the Criminal Injuries Compensation Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. The Honorable Elizabeth Barrett Anderson received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Jason W. Bazza to serve as a member, Classified Employee of the Government of Guam, Representative of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Jason W. Bazza received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Stephen R. Hollister to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Stephen R. Hollister received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of David J. John to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. David John, David J. John received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Yolanda M. Pedronis to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. All in favor, please raise your hand. Yolanda M. Pedronis received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Donald I. Weekly Senior to serve as a member of the A. B. Juan Pat International Airport Authority Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Donald I. Weekly Senior received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Alexandria Sandy Gold Yao to serve as a member of the Guam Real Estate Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Alexandria Sandy Gold Yao received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. That concludes our voting file. We are now on brief extension of remarks. The floor is open. There's, oh, sorry, we're not there. We still have one more item on the second reading. Uh, Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I moved to recess until ten a.m. Monday to address Bill one three zero dash thirty-seven.
Motion to recess till ten a.m. on Monday. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries for recess until ten a.m. Monday. Sejuas Maasi to the clerks and to each of you, my colleagues. Sejuas Maasi.